This conference will now be recorded.
In the last two sessions, what we did, we were looking at baseline configuration process in SAP ECC system. Plus baseline configuration process in SAP S4 HANA system. This show everybody got at least one basic idea understanding, right? Screen familiarity?
Yes.
Now what we will do, we will try to understand baseline configuration. In both ECC and S4 HANA system. Two parallelly we will look at in the current session. So for that what we will do, I kept two screens open on your screen. One is SAP ECC, left hand side you see SAP ECC, right hand side you will find SAP S4 HANA system. Clear? ECC on left hand side, S4 HANA and right hand side. Okay, now let me log into ECC. I am inside SAP ECC now, let me log into SAP S4 HANA now. Now I am on SAP S4 HANA system, if I go to SAP menu, both are looking same or not if you ignore the favorites?
Yes.
Yes sir, same.
Both are looking same. First thing what we did, company, company code, assignment of company to company code, I will go to company screen here. I will go to company screen here also. Are these two same? Not the values, just look at the screen, that's it.
Yes sir, same.
Yes sir, same, same sir.
Same screen, if I add a new entry in ECC, if I add a new entry in S4, both are same?
Yes, minimum changes.
Yes sir.
Correct? Both are same, come back. Now I will come to company code screen in ECC. Similarly, company code screen in S4 HANA system, both are same?
Yes.
I will add a new entry in both ECC and S4, are they same or not?
Yes.
Right, they are same. Next one, assignment. And here also. Assignment, are these two same now?
Yes sir, same only, similar. Yes.
These two are same. Now we need to make sure when you are looking at the screen, are we getting confused or are we getting comfortable now? Are you feeling uncomfortable?
Comfortable.
Yeah, comfortable now.
Feeling comfortable, right? This is what is more important. Now next one I will go to what chart of account?
Yes sir, chart of accounts.
Next thing is chart of account, let me go to chart of account in ECC. Chart of account in S4, both screens are same?
Yes sir, similar.
New entry here?
Yes sir.
New entry here? With a minimum change, there is something called integration, in S4 there is no integration.
Yes sir.
Alright, then I will go to assignment of chart of account. And here also. Assignment of chart of account. Are they same, except name here it is chart accounts. And here it is CTY chart account, here it is LTCO, otherwise both are same, terminology is different, here it is.
Yes.
Entry chart of account, here it is alternative chart of account, else concept logic, everything is the same. Clear it?
Yes.
Yes.
Now account group here. And account group here, are they same again?
Same. Yes sir, same.
Are these two same?
Yes sir.
These are again same, alright. Next one, retained earnings account here. Something here, retained earnings account. Something here, are these two same?
Yes sir, same.
Yes sir, same sir.
Alright, next one.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year. I will go to fiscal year here in ECC. I will go to fiscal year in S4 HANA system, are these two same?
Yes, yes sir, same.
Alright. Then assignment of a fiscal year in ECC, assignment of a fiscal year in S4 HANA, are they same?
Yes sir, same.
Yes, same.
They are same, okay. After fiscal year posting period variant, I will open posting period variant here. Here also, are they same?
Yes, same.
These two are same, okay. And then assignment in ECC. Assignment in S4, are they same?
Yes.
Right, same only?
Same.
Is, correct. Now next one, opening, closing the posting period. Opening, closing the posting period. Are they same? And here you have one, two sets right, periods?
Yes sir.
You have two set of period, here you have three set of period.
Yes, third, third, third.
Here third one is not available in ECC, third interval is added in S4, otherwise it is all same?
Yes, same.
Yes.
Okay. After this, next you have field status. If I go to field status in ECC. Field status in S4, are they same?
Yes, yes sir.
Sir, same.
Okay. Assignment in ECC for field status, assignment in S4 for field status, are they same?
Yes, same.
Yes sir.
This is again same, okay. Next one, what we did after field status?
Uh, field status, GL tolerance sir.
Tolerance if I go to ECC. Tolerance if I go to S4. Are they same?
Yes, same.
These are same, okay. Next one, customer vendor tolerance in ECC. Customer vendor tolerance in S4, are they same?
Yes, these are also same.
This is also same.
Here Ebin is mentioned, here again is mentioned, otherwise.
Both are same, gain or revenue are same.
Both are same sir, same only, similar.
Meaning some terminology is different but otherwise it is all the same.
Same, yes.
Okay, income, revenue, gain all are same. Next one, user level tolerance. Here and user level tolerance here. Are these two same?
Yes sir, same.
Yes sir, same.
These two are again same, okay. And here, what next?
Controlling area sir.
Controlling area here. And controlling area here. Are they same?
Yes sir.
You find something called, does leading FS version hide controlling area in F4?
Yes. Penultimate, penultimate statement version, yes sir.
Few points you are able to see here and there. Otherwise more or less it is the same or not?
Yes, same.
Correct? Activation, assignment, everything is the same?
Same, yes.
After controlling area?
Tax procedures.
Tax procedure. In ECC, tax procedure in S4, are they same or not?
Yes sir, same.
Again these are same, next one.
Activate profit.
Tax procedure assignment. And here also, tax procedure assignment, again these are same?
Yes sir, yes.
Okay, next one.
Profit center accounting activation.
Profit center activation, here also profit center activation, are they same or not same?
Similar sir.
These are same. Come back, come back next.
GL account classification for documents.
Document splitting in ECC. Similarly, document splitting in S4 HANA system. Okay, first one classified GL account, classified GL account, document type. Document type. Splitting characteristic, splitting characteristic. Okay, zero balance clearing account, zero balance clearing account, activate splitting, activate splitting, all are same or not?
Yes sir, yes.
Right, majority the concept functionality remains same from ECC to S4, next.
Non-leading lecture.
Non-leading lecture. When it comes to non-leading lecture, it is created separately in ECC. Here you need to create a non-leading lecture but in S4, you will create it in a different screen. Here you will add a non-leading lecture, meaning there is a difference or not, non-leading lecture creation in ECC S4?
Yes sir, there is a difference from ECC to S4.
Right, there is a difference, okay, next.
Currency conversions.
Currency conversion settings are here and currency conversion settings are in the same screen?
Yes sir.
Here they are in the same.
You can use up to three, three currencies.
In ECC maximum three currencies are allowed, in S4 maximum ten currencies are allowed, otherwise it is the same logic. Screen is different else logic, concept remains the same. Come back, what next?
The next change rate maintenance.
Exchange rate, you have translation ratio here. You have the translation ratio here also, are these two same or not?
Yes sir, same.
Both are same, come back. And then come back, next updating exchange rate in ECC. Updating exchange rate in S4, are they same or not?
Hmm, yes sir, similar.
Right here, again they are same, come back, come back, next.
Consistency check which is applicable for only S4 HANA.
Consistency check is only available in S4, it is not available in ECC, okay, next. FS double zero. GL account creation FS double zero in ECC. GL account creation FS double zero in S4, both are same. Alright, there are minor differences, here you will get two radio buttons and here there are no radio button.
Yes.
Radio button is replaced with a dropdown and here there is a radio button. In ECC, there is only two classification, either PNL or balance sheet in S4. PNL can be categorized into three, non-operating, primary, secondary, balance sheet is two, cash and balance sheet account, else same logic.
Yes sir.
Next.
Profit center.
That means sir, that means primary cost, secondary cost is part of FI now, earlier it was in CO model?
Correct.
Yeah, okay sir.
After GL creation?
Profit center. Yes sir, profit center master.
Go to profit center. Something and here also go to profit center, put something, are these two same?
Yes, same sir, similar.
Alright. Next.
Cost center.
Cost centers and here also. Cost center, are these two same?
Yes, same.
These are same.
Yes.
Okay, come back. And here also, come back, next.
GL post, document number ranges.
Ah, maintain document number.
Number ranges. Here. And the number ranges here, same or not?
Same. Yes sir, same, similar.
Same, okay, next.
Post account.
GL document posting, GL document posting, same or not same?
Similar screen, same, same.
Right, both are same and then you have reports.
Reports, line item.
FHLL zero three line item report. Same or not?
Yes sir, similar.
Yes.
Next.
Balance report.
Balance report. Same or not?
Yes sir.
Except one or two radio buttons like this.
Yes, yes.
Alright.
Select loading or open.
Next.
Then trial balance.
This is here and this is here. Same or not same?
Same, yes sir, similar.
Now we are able to look at all the baseline configuration between ECC S4 in less than ten to fifteen minutes?
Yes sir, yes.
Right, initially we took a little time but as you move forward, you are feeling comfortable, you are able to understand between the comparison without any confusion now?
Yes, yes sir, yes.
Tomorrow when there is any confusion and somebody is saying something, do TCC, do TSP or not, don't get into any kind of a confusion because all are same, because SAP. Itself runs on a same logic, does not make any difference you are on ECC S4, might be minute changes and it is all improvement, am I correct?
Yes sir.
It's all improvement, SAP themselves call it as simplification, what do they call it as?
Simplification, simplification.
Simplification meaning from one process to another process or from one version to another version, SAP is simplifying the process. Meaning things are becoming easy or not?
Yes sir.
Meaning, things are becoming easy, in short, if you are on ACC now, if you get into S4 HANA, things would have become easier. It is no longer tough, difficult like it was in ECC.
Yes sir.
If things are becoming easier, your learning should also become easier, am I right?
Yes sir.
If things are getting easier, your learning, your understanding should not get complicated, your learning, understand should not get tough. You have to go in the same way, SAP is making SAP FICO simplified, meaning more easy for everybody to work. As a consultant, as a candidate, we also need to make sure learning FICO is now simple, easy.
Yes, yes.
Don't think I need to do TCC, I need to do S4, public, private, different other things, don't get into this kind of mode because at the end, everything is based on the same logic. Stick to the logic, then you will automatically work on how system is supposed to behave, understood right?
Yes sir, understood, yes.
Once these points are understood, what we need to do, we need to take an example. Now any example you take, previously we talked about a company, their product, nature of a business, how their product is manufactured, how they are making a sale, how the profit is being calculated? How do they do the daily transactions or in a particular month, what could be the possible mandatory transaction? If you take those transactions, prepare the accounting, what could be the profit or loss? Everybody can do it or not? At least guessing is possible?
Yes, yes sir, possible.
If you start a new company for a day or for a week for a month, what and all is possible and how do you calculate your profit-loss? Now here you are only focusing on the business, am I right?
Yes.
Let's say I am starting one business, any business and say that okay, this will be my investment, this will be my purchasing, this will be my expenses, this is my sale, this is my income, overall this is my profit. Now to do this, do you really need a system or you don't need the system to calculate it?
Need system.
To calculate the profit-loss?
Don't need the system.
No need.
You don't need the system, right? You just need to know, okay, what is my investment, ten thousand rupees, out of ten thousand, how much I purchased, eight thousand rupees? Whatever I purchased for eight thousand, I sold it for twelve thousand rupees, now what is my profit?
Two thousand rupees. Two thousand rupees.
I told purchase for how much?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand is purchase, I told sale for how much?
Twelve thousand.
What is the profit?
Two thousand.
Four thousand.
Four thousand.
Four thousand. Now easy calculation is possible or not, okay, twelve thousand, I sold it, eight thousand I purchased it, sale minus purchase is my profit, four thousand?
Yes sir.
Manually if I do it, it is four thousand, if I take a calculator, it is four thousand, if I take pen paper four thousand, if I do it in tally or wherever it is, still four thousand profit, correct or no?
Yes sir, correct.
Because I am doing it in SAP does not mean I will do it, as simple as like you are writing an exam, you write it with renalspen, you write it with silopen, you write it with any other pen, does not make any difference in the result, agree or not?
Yes sir, yeah.
If right, right answer, even if you write it with pencil, you will get the same mark. Pen is not adding any value, correct or not?
Yes.
Might make you write smooth, might make you. Make you look more clear, more clarity while somebody is reading it, otherwise technically there is no difference, right? It's just a tool for you to bring what is there on your mind on the paper, correct or not?
Yes sir, yes sir, correct.
Simple, your SAP does not increase your profit. SAP does not increase your profit, here don't focus on SAP, focus on the business. Focus on the process, focus on the concept, then bring this into SAP, then you focus on SAP. Here you are not blindly looking at the system, you are looking at the system with an example of your own, correct or not?
Yes sir, correct, yes.
Then you will verify, it is as simple as like you are purchasing a calculator. If you are purchasing a calculator, what normally we do, we type one, two, three, four, five, six to ensure every key is working?
Yes.
Alright. You also make sure, okay, one plus one is equal to, it has to show two, if calculator is showing one plus one is equal to three, you will buy that calculator?
No sir.
No.
No sir.
Alright, but then your testing should be in two ways, point number one, make sure every button is working on the calculator, first check. Second check, make sure if the calculator is doing the calculation properly or not? One plus, one plus one should be two, two minus four, it has to show minus two or it has to show two hundred into forty, some number. Meaning that is how you verify and that is how you buy, agree or not?
Yes, yes sir, agree, yes.
You will not blindly purchase anything, right? You will not blindly accept everything, we also do testing, right? When I say we also do the testing, we will make sure whether it is working fine or not, whether it is looking fine or not, similar way you need to look at test SAP FICO system. Is my point clear for everyone?
Yes sir, clear, yes.
And these points is what you have to strictly keep in your mind while learning, practicing, preparing for SAP FICO. Which will allow you to look at the system with a different approach and this is what is very, very important for any FICO consultant, no matter you are learning, no matter you are working. The way you look at the system should be same because today you are not a consultant but tomorrow you are a consultant, am I right?
Yes sir.
Today you may be learning SAP FICO but tomorrow you are working on SAP FICO, so there should be no change. Just that today you are learning, tomorrow you are working, that's it, but whatever you are learning, whatever you are working should be same, no deviation. Okay, while learning I did like this but in working I am doing like this, no, then whatever you learnt is not correct. And apart from these changes, whatever you have seen between ECC to S4, there is one more change which is called as SAP Fury.
Yes sir.
Fury is applicable only for ECC, only for S4 or for both.
Only for S4.
Only for S4.
Fury is applicable only for S4 HANA system, using Fury, what you will do, end user activity or consulting activity?
End user activity.
Using Fury, you will be using or you will be performing end user activity, not consulting. Okay, you can also do consulting but always I say it is for end user activity.
Yes sir.
In short, it is all like everybody is using, what you say, your net banking, mobile banking, yes, no?
Yes.
Yes sir.
If you want to log in and then check your bank account balance, there are two options, ignore phone pay, Google pay. Eliminate those phone pay, Google pay options, look at your bank, let's say you are using HDFC Bank, Axis Bank or any other bank. To check your bank balance, there are two option, option number one, go to browser www.hdfcnetbanking.com or accessbanknetbanking.com.
Yes sir. Yes.
Alright, and option number two, go to straight away mobile phone, go to play store. And then download the net banking of HDFC or Axis Bank and then login, which one is more easy? Google net banking website or mobile phone net banking application?
Mobile.
Mobile, mobile.
Application is more easy, right? In application you don't need to type ID password every time, but in browser you need to always type ID password. You need to verify your authentication, different things are there, but in mobile you can save it, you can put a fingerprint, different things. More faster.
Yes sir.
And you will not get every feature like you get it in your website, am I right?
Yes sir.
Website will give you broader options but application will give you smaller options because it is supposed to save the time, it is supposed to be more user-friendly, mobile banking application, correct or not?
Yes.
It is similar way your Fury application, Fury is also designed with the same intention, it is supposed to be more user-friendly, more time-saving for a user to perform their activity. Clear it?
Yes sir, clear.
Once we start working on the system, once we start creating the entries and all, I will practically make you realize experience why Fury is more user-friendly, why everybody is supposed to use work on Fury. You will practically experience we will see by posting a document, by generating a report, by creating a master, by checking something in GOI, same thing by looking at in Fury. By generating a report, by creating a master, by checking something in GOI, same thing by looking at in Fury? How it is fast? How much time it is taking here, how much time it is taking there? What is user interface there, what is user interface here? And where you need to put more effort, where you don't need to put any additional effort? You will practically realize, which will give you confidence or not? Okay, in Fury, these are very simple, very easy to work? And tomorrow when somebody is asking, especially in the interview, why Fury is required? And all, you can confidently talk now, whatever you have seen?
Yes.
On the SAP? Whatever you have experienced on SAP? Not what you heard, what you heard, not what you watched in anywhere, in any content, not that? That is only to add additional information, but you should have your own information. Don't depend on additional information unless you have your own information. Your key is always your own data, based on your own data, add additional information from any sources, okay? You are just adding on additional parameters, additional content to your learning, which is continuous process? As long as you are working in SAP, you still have to work, you still have to learn something new? Right, there is no end to it, even I do not know many things, even I do not know everything in FICO? Maybe something you ask, I may not be aware of it, but I will tell openly, this I am not sure? But with my knowledge, with my experience, I can easily figure it out what it is, correct or not?
Yes, sir, yes.
Right? You might ask me a question? Don't think whatever you ask, I know, I also may not be knowing certain things that you ask? But what I will do, I will tell, I do not know, let me check and then get back to you, next day I will tell you what it is? Right, don't think if I tell, if I say that I don't know this? Don't take it the other way around, nobody knows everything, this is just an example? Right, but with my experience, with my understanding, with my skill set? I can understand, I can solve any kind of a problem in SAP FICO? Which you may not be able to do it at this moment, right?
Yes, sir.
That's what you have to learn, tomorrow if you are coming across something? Where you have no idea, how do you get on to it, how do you solve it, how do you work on it? That's where your consulting will come into the picture. Same thing, you treat yourself like a doctor? You treat yourself like a police, you treat yourself like a lawyer? Everybody is a consultant, treating different clients, treating different customer?
Yes, that's that.
To a doctor, let's say every day ten patients are coming? Ten patients will come with ten different problems, correct or not? Out of ten patients, let's say? Four patients came stating that they have fever, now these four patients does not have the same fever symptoms, right? Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
The single term is, everybody is coming with fever? Everybody is coming with viral fever, viral infection and all, but treatment is different or not? Testing is different or not?
Yes, sir.
Reason is the same fever? Alright, in the similar way, when you are working as a consultant, same thing? Every client will have a different business process, every client will have a different business requirement? According to that, you have to work, according to that, you have to provide your consulting service? The moment you understand this point, the sooner you realize this point? It is the best that you will understand proper SAP FICO right from the beginning, else? You will have to realize these points later on, probably after training, after getting a job, at this moment, you can do nothing? Because there you have everything, but you don't have the time, correct or not?
Yes, sir, correct, yes.
Now you have time, you have the? Right content, put proper effort, then you will see? That you tomorrow you don't need to worry, you just need to enjoy your job, that's it. Simply go to office and join? Because you know what is the problem, how to do, how to work on it? You will take it easy because you know how you need to work, how you need to manage? In any kind of a project, with any kind of a client, with any kind of user? Clear it so far, everyone, comfortably?
Yes, sir, clear and comfortable, yes.
And this is what? Something that you all have to ensure, you are feeling comfortable and confident on the subject? As you move forward, every new session that we add, I want everybody to feel? Comfortable, confident, feeling that yes, I think I am able to understand now? Yet today, it is better than yesterday, and tomorrow I think it will be even more better, correct or not?
Yes.
As you move forward, you need to ensure things are getting simplified, things are becoming easier? For you to understand, for you to correct? And that feel is what everybody should target, and this is how you need to understand? Okay, I think I am now able to understand FICO? If I keep adding a new topic, and if I keep getting confused? What is this, what is that, I need to practice three, four topic, not required? As you move forward, every point is getting repeated or not?
Yes, yes, sir.
And that is how we will go, not that I will tell you something today, tomorrow something else, day after tomorrow something else? Tomorrow when you do, it will become a kitchen, and you will not understand what it does? You don't even identify what is what? That should never be the case? Your learning means you need to understand what you are learning, you need to understand? To what extent you have practiced, configured on the system? Alright? Fine then, let me stop this here for today, in the next session, which means tomorrow's session? As we discussed, tomorrow we will have session only for doubts clarification? On the topics whatever we discussed till today? Make sure you go through the, if you refer the last three sessions, it is sufficient? Last three sessions if you refer, it is more than enough, because these three sessions? Will cover almost everything what we discussed from the last one week or ten days?
Yes, sir.
Summaryization? Refer to the last three sessions strictly, and then make a note of all the doubts, confusions, whatever you got? Then in the tomorrow's session, you can ask the question? I will answer, I will clarify what it is, but one point? If you have a doubt, and the same question or the same note is asked by somebody else? Please don't repeat the same question, am I clear?
Yes.
Right, you will be having a doubt, somebody else will ask the similar question, same question, and your doubt is clarified there? Enough done, you don't need to ask your doubt? If you have any other doubt, if you have any other question you can ask, if it is the same, similar, avoid it? So that we can save the time and then we can cover maximum questions? Because we will be having limited time? We need to make sure maximum questions we can cover or we can understand? And everybody can get more clarification on different points? As somebody's doubt may add value to your understanding? And might give you an idea that why I did not get this doubt, correct or not?
Yes, yes, sir, correct.
Because somebody may be thinking in a different way? The doubt may be valid, the doubt may be invalid, but both will teach you something? Okay, I should think like this, okay, I should not think like this? Two ways are there, you need to understand? How you need to look at the system, you also need to understand how you should not look at the system? Both we need to understand, and when we look at the different, different equations? These points we will practically realize? Clear it?
Yes, sir.
So the next recorded session tomorrow, because so that we can?
It will be recorded, it will be recorded. Okay, fine then, let me stop this recording now.